Coffee with the mayor this Saturday, June 12th, here in Village Hall from 9 to 12. With everything that you might have heard or read about, I will try to address the best I can for now. If you feel more comfortable emailing your concerns, please do so at mayor@washingtonville-ny.gov. I like my coffee regular with one sugar.
Sorry, you mentioned in the Facebook post that the building inspector might be here as well?
That's the next one. John Terry, our building inspector, will also be on hand to answer any questions you might have regarding permits. He also takes his coffee with one sugar and milk.
I'll take baby wipes maybe.
What's that?
I'll take baby wipes maybe.
Chief Sacaro, myself, met with school officials earlier today regarding the graduation. More details hopefully will be made available at our regular meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, July... June 15th, I'm sorry. At next week's regular meeting, we will have a tentative schedule for public hearings for our zoning comprehensive planning presentation. Our last announcement, fireworks sponsored by the village, is all set for Friday, July 2nd. Trustee Wadado, you have everything you had tonight. I appreciate you getting everyone together for that meeting that you had.
Oh, yes. No, I'm sorry.
It was you, right? You put everything together?
Yes, it was me.
Today.
No, actually, everything's set up. I don't think there was anything left. We sent plans, all the paperwork's coming from July 4th, fireworks are going to John. I don't think there was anything left. I've shared a map with everybody. I think Chief Sacaro, she's gonna mark up where, you know, some special units might be. They block off Ahern and not Ahern, Revere and Decker once the fireworks are about to start. And Brian Bates was there. He wears two hats, volunteer, Blooming Grove Ambulance and Manon. And he said they were gonna have three units. And he'll let me know and I'll put that on the map so that everybody's aware that day, God forbid anything. And I do have to order portable toilets. It's always happening. Because the bathrooms will be blocked off during fireworks. It's 10 minutes, but, you know, it will be blocked off before that too, so that nobody's going anywhere near.
Where are the bathrooms, where are the bodies gonna go?
Um, right, like, in the parking lot, kind of. Yeah, I mean, in the corner, where the reading library and the little libraries.
Maybe where the, I saw them recently. There's something on the grassy area right there.
Yeah, they can put them on that side, yeah. So that there's more parking.
And there's more than a library and bathroom.
It's right there, you know, you read while you're on the body.
Are you, is the village entered into a contract with the fireworks professionals, or?
We did sign it, yes.
Okay.
And I know you mentioned to John that we need...
I was gonna make them sign the indemnification agreement, yeah. Um, where, are they launching from, Burn Allen, or?
Yes, yeah. Do you want me to send you the contract that we signed?
Uh, sure, that's, yeah, that's fine. And just, yeah, just so I can have the legal entity who's gonna be responsible. I'm assuming John checked in the insurance and all that.
Yeah, it's the same company that we use about two years ago.
Yes, but we didn't do this.
We didn't do...
The building inspector, so we didn't do that dissection of it.
Yeah, we had, we had Bill Morrissey.
So maybe he just did the fire inspection part, because these questions never came up.
But he was acting building inspector. All the eyes were dialed in. Please request that, does it, Isaac, that's his question. Alright, so when do we come out to see?
Oh, sure, yeah, you can work it out.
Oh, yeah, I can email it. I remember if you could copy paste it.
And I know...
On YouTube.
Chris, you have anything, any concerns of that there?
Fireworks? No.
Alright. So that's, that's it?
Yes. They put up a large safety fencing. I call it different name, I don't know. I think it's like 200 feet.
It's a safety, yeah.
Yeah, from the center of the fireworks, or straight?
I think goes over the stream, like by the backstop of the ball field, and comes around by the bathroom, and then we're going right down the rock wall. One night far, it's not interesting.
I really stand in Florida, I did not see them here.
It worked out fine, right? You guys still have the same...
Somebody had Facebook Live.
No, I had to get all the fences. When we put it up around the playground, they all... Well, that, the weather, the wind, rain, it ruined them all. So I couldn't, I got new fencing, so we're good to go with that.
A little pain in the neck, it's nice, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and I got, I don't know if it matters. When we did this two years ago, I rented four portable toilets. Should I do the same?
Was it enough, which we, I think we're better off having more than not.
I, I ain't put on for the four. I don't remember watching who was using the bathroom.
How long is it until the bathroom's closed?
What's that?
It's gonna be closed for most of the evening, because they have to dismantle everything.
Okay, that's good.
Before it starts, it's locked off.
But there's something leading up to the fireworks, though, isn't there?
No, the fireworks and the movie. And they even have people walking over there. It is for the night, but it, everything kinda empties out after the fireworks.
Yeah, because they love people.
I don't know if people are just gonna get out.
Well, last meeting was Joyce.
This year it's Footloose.
This year it's Footloose. So we're getting older.
Running from a shark dancing. Yeah, right?
I would go with four minimum. If you think we should add more, because we should have a bigger...
Maybe like five, four, rent four, get two, three?
Do we have the stinks? I also don't have like the water dispensers where you can wash your hands?
Yeah.
German.
I could get a price.
German.
Did you have that?
The thing on the...
Yeah.
That's all the football game.
No, I'm just gonna like, no, I don't...
I know, it's not a wedding.
It's still cold, there needs to run worse.
You're gonna drive and come back.
I'll be there anyway, I'll do the towel last.
Oh, there you go. 10 cents a towel.
You're dribbling the money for a rental.
I know, this is gonna turn into a...
So we can start with four if we feel that we need.
Okay.
Four is... We can ask them what their recommendation too.
And they're gonna ask me about how many people and I'm gonna say, I don't know.
How many people were at the last one?
It was a lot, and now this is longer. So I, and it's post coping, everybody's dying to get out. You know? The carnival alone on that first night was very crowded.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a feeling it's...
Sorry, though. I wasn't here for you.
There's six portable toilets.
Yeah.
I'll ask.
Alright, so what we could do is make it determination next week, at the regular meeting. If we go four, we go one.
Might wanna call now, because Al tried to get one. He said he couldn't get a portable body.
That's why I was asking.
He was asking for one, okay.
But there's a shortage.
So they're very...
There's bodies.
There's a shortage with building materials?
Everything.
Portable bodies?
Yes.
Not twelve paper anymore.
Nope.
Thank God. Alright, so you wanna call tomorrow then, or?
Sure, I have my direct contact, I don't...
Yeah, got you.
Just one.
I know, right?
Well, maybe the people who opened up their home. They don't have, nowadays, you just don't know. Who opened up their home to strangers. Okay. Anybody else have anything to add? New business, Akito School of Self-Defense, Trustee Wadado?
That's what I was gonna say, okay. I have a permanent facility request for... Yep. Akito School of Self-Defense, to use Burn Allen Park, particular area of the hockey rink, because people are not using yoga on the field. You know, he said he would love to use the hockey rink. He preferred it because of the more sturdier ground. So everything worked out, Saturdays in June and July. And he has the correct paperwork. I sent you guys everything, certificate of liability insurance, and it's from 8 to 12 on Saturdays for those two months. Apparently, they're getting work done on their building and they can handle it.
Where's his building?
I must have stolen it.
Oh, yes?
They had water damage.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so they're waiting to get it fixed.
When I saw that today, the only thing I thought about after, I thought you updated us on the current meeting of the plenary, is the 26th graduation, or is it a parade? If it's a parade, then that might impact that area. 26th, right?
That's a good question.
Yeah, we will have, we don't really know what is gonna happen yet.
I guess they do that, you know, they do go by then.
But it wouldn't be, the parade would be, if there is a parade, it would be 10, so it might impact that way. Can he have a rain date of Sunday, if he needs it?
I'll ask him.
Is there anything scheduled for that Sunday?
Oh, I don't, I don't think so. 27th, no. Not unless there's a rain date for the 20th. For a farm market, she said that out loud. So that would be the only domino effect of... Yeah, and that's a car show and farm market on the 20th.
Graduation.
And actually, now that you mention that, if the school has a rain date...
Congratulations.
Yeah. Well, it wouldn't be until August, right?
But the rain date?
The rain date for graduation?
Yeah, when's the rain date? So if they have the parade, oh, okay, alright, okay. Then never mind, it's horrible. So I'll just ask him about the 26th. Is there a backup plan?
Okay. T-Mobile versus Verizon, Trustee Wadado?
And in this corner, do we have to vote on Akito?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, we forgot something there.
Thanks, man.
So, want to make a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second, thank you.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor Wadado, seconded by Trustee Sampson. Roll call, Trustee Kolor?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Trustee Kolor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wadado?
Yes. She's talking over the names, though.
I see that.
He's concentrating. I am concentrating.
I see the frown go like this.
Okay. I'm concentrating, yes. We'll just admit that.
You don't want Rich Rumpel twice.
T-Mobile versus Verizon, Trustee Kolor, thank you.
So last month, I think it was, Chris from DPW approached me about his phone. It's not holding a charge anymore. So I didn't know where to start, so I started with Christine, talked to her. She had given Linda the rights to go and contact Verizon to find out what kind of plan is available. So in the meantime, I looked at the, I took the phone bills out of the cabinet, and we have a plan for the cell phones, and then we have a plan that's separate for the police cars, their boxes. So I didn't wanna touch, I'm not gonna touch the boxes, because they seem to be working fine and, you know, you don't wanna mess that up. But when I looked through the bills for the phones, for the five phones, one of which I think is in a drawer in Joan's desk, but the four phones that are left, the plan that they have is very confusing. Even the bills are confusing. Like, my cellphone bill, as long as I don't call China, it's the same every month.
Right.
You know? But the way that, from what I can tell, and I, and I tried calling, but they wouldn't talk to me, because I'm not authorized. So then I pretended and called from the Village of Spark Hill, where I grew up, which wasn't a village, but I was using it. And they were like, we don't find this. I'm like, okay. What if I started a village? What would the phones... So like, they were really, like, no, we can't give you information. So...
It's amazing, right?
Right? So, anyway, so, and Christine said that she had given Linda, and Linda said, when she called, they wouldn't talk to her. So when I looked through the bills, what I could find is that it seems to...
Who's the authorized user of the account?
If I called, they'd say, we know it's you, Mr. Marco Sacco.
You should have like more than one or two...
It's not the, yeah.
Authorized caller.
I think the original authorized person was Marion.
It needs to be updated.
The bill goes to somebody named Marion.
It was the old one right here.
So that needs to be updated.
I was gonna say, somebody should call them, not the...
Only Marion is the call.
But why is the authorized person is, does anybody know where Marion is? He thinks she could be deceased, you know?
Right. I guess they're like, you're paying the bills, so!
Anyway, so, and when I looked at...
We might get you involved.
Okay, I was gonna say, that's absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah, I know. And I realize when I was in the union at school, the account, the savings account, which had thousands and thousands of dollars in it, one year we went to put the new officers in, and it hadn't been updated for like 15 years. Like, how we operated, so, you know? And then we had to like declare it on, I mean, thinking, or something, and we had to take it over that way. So, I don't know. But anyway, so, when I looked at the months, it seems to be like they pay a certain price. I'm gonna say that's like $40, $38 a month. And then, two of the phones, I guess the active phones, it's a debt per data charge, so it's not even unlimited data. So if they use the data, it goes up for $7.99 per month, and then it, it's just, it's a mess. It's really incomprehensible. But anyway, so I wrote the bill, so I have, I won't hand out. So the four lines from Verizon, these are the four bills that I just took randomly.
So we're paying for four. How many of these lines are we actually using?
We have, we're paying for five.
We're paying for five.
And why is sitting at Joan's desk?
I think that's called the water phone, was that? The water phone.
Is it the bat phone? Why is it sitting in his desk?
It's a flip phone.
It could be the water or sewer phone, which no more really is part of.
So shouldn't we disconnect it?
Well, that's, that's why we're...
Oh, that's what you had, okay.
So he's like, let me spin it out.
So anyway, so then the, so those are the four months that I just looked. 136, 222 was random charges for data and for your, like, they had a plan where they were allowed 200 minutes, but if they used more than 200 minutes, then the plan jumped to another plan. So then, of course, they charge you to jump to a different plan. People that saves you then paying the 25 or 35 cents per minute for that, it's a mess. So anyway, that was their deal. I mean, I really couldn't get more information than that, just looking at the bills. I called T-Mobile, finally got through to the government, and they have a bundle for $26.95. Everything's included in that. No taxes, no fees, no whatever. It also comes with an 11 gigabyte of tethering. They have standard phones that are given for free, the Samsung A12, the Samsung A32, and the iPhone SE. Which are all better than what we have. Which are much better than what we have. And the total package for four phones would be unlimited data, unlimited phone, unlimited texting for $174 a month.
Oh, my God.
Make a motion.
Wait, wait, I have a question.
I don't wanna do any motion there, because I'd like to just put it off till next month, but I need to get Christine to figure out how to stop the other thing.
Well, I think what we'll do is have Stephanie look, send a letter to...
I don't take no for an answer.
No, not even lie. I think that's identical to...
And that's the best...
And I looked at the map.
But we're not touching the police.
We're not touching the police. The police hall will have a new phone.
Right, but in the, in the cars...
The cars will stay the same.
Okay. Who are the four lines for? Like, we're getting four lines, but for who? The mayor, Chris?
Horace has one.
Chief Sacaro.
Chief Sacaro.
Chief Sacaro, and there's a...
Lopez, it should be the building's...
Who?
Lopez have one?
I think somebody in the police department, actually.
It should be John Terry.
He should have one.
Yeah.
So what about the mayor?
Well, you know, maybe we need to look at what we need for phones, and if we need...
My own business.
You're like, you scared to lose one.
What we maybe need to do then is to see who needs a phone, who doesn't need a phone, and paying for $26, $27.
Well, I think, yeah, we should ask Chief Sacaro.
When I asked the chief, I talked to him about this. He said that most of their guys use their own phone, and they're okay with that. So I guess it's just for him and this other phone, I guess they, maybe it's an emergency phone, that they pass it around if they need it.
It could be the sergeant's face, or... Each shift, could be.
We can always call them.
But John, definitely, the building inspector definitely needs it.
But even if you draw another, you know, $28, that would equal the 136 for the minimum amount that we've seen billed as.
This supposed iPad I'm getting?
Yeah. You gotta look for an iPad for Chris, when he does the store order, as well as the outfalls for the...
Well, so is it an iPad? Because we can do this with that.
I don't know about phone service, but you have internet service.
Right, that's what I'm saying, because I can talk to them about that. So I just need to know, is it an iPad or a Droid? The better way to go with this.
Can I ask a question?
The one thing with, I remember...
I think it depends on the program.
When we looked into the tablets...
Depends on the program.
Water?
For the water meters. UB Max said that we should use Android.
So with the iPad, you want, I mean, I hook up this to my phone's hotspot. Do the phones have hotspots, so you don't have to pay another service for an iPad? You know what I mean? That's what I do, I just hook up my...
That's actually a good point, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would ask about that, because my, my tone, it's AT&amp;T, but they took away the hotspots for like the newer phones. So that can't make my kind of hotspot anymore.
That's a, that's a hotspot.
Yeah, so if you could just look into, and that would just be one tablet for DPW.
But I thought iPad or Droid, which one do I want? He said it depends on the program. So what, what program are we looking at? Do we know a name of a program? Do you know a name of a program?
I, I didn't look into it. I guess it depends on how involved you want the mapping to do.
I could call Mike from Delaware, to see if iPad is best, or iOS is better for this.
I would assume the Droid would be better.
Yeah.
I think, you know, Droid should probably work better for this type of...
But is that capable, if I get an Apple phone, is that capable of talking to each other, making a hotspot?
Like, you getting an Apple phone?
I didn't say I was getting an Apple phone, I just...
I told you, Sam.
Yeah, I don't see why they buy it. I mean, they're all compatible, then.
They're like, Jay, looks like one.
So the test phone, you just don't know what it's for, but you're gonna make it for John.
I know when I had a Droid and I had my iPad, some of the apps, you could, they weren't the same. Like, you can find the information on both. I don't know if that's for this program that he's looking at.
Was it a web-based or app-based program?
Well, you're probably going to be doing GPS.
I guess it depends on how involved you want it. You wanna be able to stand over to Catch Basin and be able to put GPS location coordinates right there, and...
You do that through Google Maps.
I don't, I don't know how all that transpires.
Let me talk to him, so I'll get that information for you.
Who knows?
I'll call him anyway, get a card, so, of course, for the hotspot. So if you could, we're going to...
Verizon, that means to give us a priority.
Really the person that can try and contact Christine, I mean.
Yeah. You should, and any backup, I mean, you, mayor, should probably be one. There should be several people. There should not be an issue with authorizing several people in a municipality to be able to count, yeah.
It should, I'm just thinking...
One trustee...
Well, I'm just thinking, like, for example, Rich and I were elected at one time, you guys were elected another time.
So maybe it's staggering.
So staggering, so God forbid something happens.
Yeah. So you two, what, this is our...
I got enough for today.
What you said?
I got enough for today.
She's gotta call me, apologize.
I got enough bills.
Okay, so we got that taken care of, okay.
We didn't even have to fight over it.
Thanks for looking at this.
It's tedious.
It's a heck of a deal. I love how you made up a village name, that was cute.
Yeah, I like that. I think they're gonna report me as well.
Somebody record this line.
Dial 67 on my cell phone, it's funny.
Oh, my gosh, you meant to roll out to...
Okay, I just wanna add something. Trustee Sampson with... I'm gonna plug it.
Yes, okay, so...
I made copies of it.
Yes. So for the building department, they had a report. 34 building permits were issued, four of which were new homes. They had six violations that were issued, six municipal searches completed, six fire and safety inspections completed. So they're pretty busy, our building department, which is great. And that's for the month of May, May 1st through the 31st.
And I believe we all received Chief Sacaro's...
Yes, that's for her. Okay, well, no, I worry.
And we've got people who have completed their training already.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so we have the New York State Discrimination and Harassment Training, there are six who have completed, and for the Workplace Violence Prevention, there are six who've completed and one is in progress, so it's happening, so.
You raised your hand.
Yeah, I think.
I did it, and I passed.
I was gonna put my certificate on your door. Just, I went to the dollar store because I had multiple of its frames.
You are.
Oh, my gosh.
I have a telling that call. I love it, love it, love it.
She mentioned, we'll have them up here.
Okay, moving on, New York Cannabis Law.
So I, I sent a brief, what was gonna be a demo, but I thought the board would be happier, shorter, the better, that's my motto. So I sent an email instead, just a recap of what opting out would look like. Opting out would be a local law, subject to progressive referendum through municipal home rule law, section 24, which references the village law portion that we're under. Essentially, it's the, the 30-day period under village law, it would be also 45 days. With, I would suggest starting earlier, because you have to count for obviously the local law, public hearing, and progressive referendum period. The law would be requesting the new cannabis control board to not permit any onsite establishments or retail dispensaries within the village jurisdiction. Opting out would mean that you are not entitled to the 4% of excess tax that is being put on retail marijuana sales. As I, I'm sure it would be read, just a quick recap, so we know what we're, what opting out would mean for the village. The 4% is for people, for municipalities under 1 million, it is distributed by the counties. The county takes 25% off the top, 75% of that is then distributed by the county to the municipalities, which actually not only are opted in, but also have retail stores within their jurisdictions. So if the Village of Washingtonville were to remain opted in, it doesn't automatically entitle you to the taxes, you would have to actually contribute and be a hosting municipality. So with that said, and in addition, villages kind of have a strange deal where if both the town of Blooming Grove and the Village of Washingtonville remain opted in, and let's say the Village of Washingtonville only has a retail dispensary, you would still have to share that with the town, your, any taxes that you receive. It's automatically would be 50/50 unless, unless you were able to strike a, strike a separate deal with the town as to how you wish to.
Oh, yeah.
Split the, split the taxes, but automatically it would be at least 50/50 unless you convince the town to, to.
To leave there.
To have a different, yeah, to have a separate.
That's sold me right there.
So we would have a dispenser, whatever, a store, and we would have to split our share of the, of the town, that.
If you're both opted in.
50% of our 75%.
Our 75% of the 4%.
Well, you wouldn't even, it wouldn't even be 7, so I missed a step. It wouldn't even be 75%, it would be the, the proportion that your.
Entitled to up to 75%.
Dispensary and on, or onsite consumption is actually contributing to the entire comp. So if it's only like, if you're, if, let's say you have a very poorly attended onsite consumption lounge, I don't even know what these places are gonna look like.
Ooga.
That, yeah, I don't, or your dispensary is not ma, is not doing well, it's not making a lot of money. It's not gonna contribute, it's not gonna, you know, convert well in terms of like tax dollars actually coming into the village, so.
What happens now, between now and the time, let's say the local law is passed?
Good question.
Somebody is having it in their store, because it's legal.
That, no, so that it's, so when the law.
Would that be?
When the, when, when the cannabis law.
Can they go before we pass the law? Can they open?
When the, when the cannabis, when the cannabis law was passed, it automatically made possession legal to a certain, you know, law. But, yeah, so everything, like the cannabis control board and all the regulations that have to do with the licensure and distribution and every single step of the supply chain still has to be completely made and enacted in New York. So this, this simply gave this new regulatory body the power to do so, but it hasn't actually taken into effect. So given that all the regulations still need to be drafted, written, go, go through all the hearing processes that, you know, all the laws do, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to sell, or have, you can't just open up a dispensary today, there's no, there's no, well, actually, I don't know if he's made, if the governor's made any appointments for this board, but I haven't heard of any board actually existing and starting on it, I'm assuming probably. But essentially, there's no regulations yet, there's no licensing procedure in New York State yet. That's what they're gonna be working on in the coming, I, I mean, honestly, years. It's gonna, it's gonna be a while. I forgot what they say, I think it was, it was like 2022.
That they're gonna start finally seeing shelves?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at, see the Massachusetts, and even, you know, see Massachusetts years before they had their first store there, so.
So basically, we just have to have this done before, what is it?
2020, so 2022.
Yeah.
2021, uh, end of 2021.
Yeah.
You have to have your local law. But you have to take into effect the public hearing and the 30-day progressive referendum period. If the board wants to actually, villages, this is like a strange, like caveat in the law that Nikon had mentioned, villages are actually empowered to ask a vote, if you don't, if you wanted to do your own public vote on the matter, or if you feel that a public hearing process through the local law is sufficient, that's, that's acceptable.
What do you see, Chris?
I think the lo, I think the local law is sufficient, I mean, you know, people are kind of accustomed to taking that into effect, me, meaning like looking at the notices and stuff like that, it's, it's part of regular business. And as long as it's, as always, as we always do, you know, well-publicized, maybe we, maybe we run it in the paper more than once, that people will know to come, come and comment, but.
We can put it in the, the, the journal.
Sure.
Did you make that name up, the Chinese new village?
We were coordinating notes. Alright, so we're not going to share in the, the 5% of the 2% of the 5% and they took the 25% off, okay.
Off the top?
Off the top, so.
Let's figure out these numbers.
Yeah.
It's like.
And there's not even a board yet.
Wonder who will be on that one.
Well, I, I think we will share the same.
I think you do.
So.
Thank you for all that information.
Yes.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
Thanks for the, that's a problem.